There we go. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming out to the fairgrounds tonight. My name is David Barley and I'm Vice Mayor. We're joined tonight by, I'd say, at least half of the Metro Council. There were quite a few who already had a neighborhood or community event planned when we announced this meeting. We're videotaping the comments tonight, so everybody will have a chance to go back and look at them at a later date. I'm going to give you just a little bit of an idea about the process tonight. So, to start with, every council meeting, we have an analysis that is prepared, a written analysis, prepared by the council director and lawyer, Mike Jamison. Tonight, instead of having it written, there's a very brief PowerPoint presentation that Mr. Jamison is going to go through that lays out what the resolution before the council does. It's a very neutral presentation. It's not meant to indicate support or opposition to the resolution. It's just a clear legal statement of what the resolution would do if it were adopted. So that'll be our first part. Then we're going to open it up for public comment. Typically, at the council meetings, you'll line up for and against, and what that really does is mean that the people who are against have to wait all night, which isn't always fair. Additionally, on a lot of issues, you'll have people stand up, and they'll be sort of for it, or sort of against it. So tonight, instead of going for or against, what I'm going to ask is that those people who really have to get somewhere soon, I'm going to ask them to come up first. And if you don't have to be somewhere very quickly, I'll ask for you to sort of linger and let other people go first. That way, people will have a fair chance to be heard. Let's see. You also have signed in tonight. Most of you have. I think we started letting people in at the end without signing in. If you'd like to get more correspondence from the council in the future, or any more information about this particular proposal, and you didn't sign in, please go back and do it so that we can communicate with you going forward. We do have some council members who have to leave early tonight, so if they get up and leave, please don't take offense. It didn't have anything to do with your comment. It's just other commitments that people have tonight. Is there anything else I left out? True. True. Thank you. I always leave something out. Everybody's going to get two minutes to speak. You are not in any way obligated to use all two minutes. And I encourage you to minimize your comments. And if you just want to stand up and say, "I really support this," or "I would support it if," or "I'm against it unless," or "I'm against it no matter what," that's fine, too. We really want to hear from everybody. But, the one thing we do want to hear is your name and address. That way, it gives us a sense of, is this my particular constituent? Is this somebody who lives in Davidson County, or is it not? Because those are factors that we consider as we make decisions as a council body. So, having said that, I'm going to ask the council lawyer and staff director, Mike Jamison, to come up and give us a brief presentation about what the proposed resolution would do if enacted. My name is Mike Jamison. As the Vice Mayor said, I'm here to give you a very plain, short, and simple recitation of the actual resolution that is before the council at the next meeting for their vote. The resolution itself is numbered RS 2017-910. That is the bill number. Every bill has a caption, a paragraph at the beginning that states essentially the summary of the text that is below. There are three main components to this resolution, and I hope this text is large enough for everybody to read, but if you can't, I'll essentially be right reading what's on these slides in any event. The resolution caption says, "A resolution approving the issuance of public facility revenue improvement bonds by the sports authority of the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County." That's the first and most significant portion. Secondly, it states, "authorizes the pledge of certain revenues of the Metropolitan Government as security for the bonds." And the third and final component is authorizing an official statement to be distributed in connection with the sale of the bonds. So essentially, as you can see, the primary component is, the Metro Council is approving the sports authority to issue bonds, which it's allowed to do under state law, once the local legislative body approves that, in the amount of $225 million. Now, a resolution like this also has to state the purpose of those expenditures. What are the bonds going to be spent on? And in this instance, you'll see that there are four areas on which the $225 million could be spent. First, the cost of constructing a stadium and the facility surrounding it. Secondly, the interest and the debt service on the bonds that are funding it. Next are professional services, because building a stadium would require hiring architects, engineers, lawyers, other professionals. And fourth and finally is the bond sale costs. So those are the four areas in which the $225 million could be spent. However, before the sports authority, the authorizing agent, could spend or issue those bonds, six things have to happen, and these are spelled out within the resolution. First, a team has to be awarded the expansion franchise. The team and the sports authority then have to execute, there are three separate documents that have to be executed. First, a development agreement between the team and the sports authority. Second, the sports authority and Metro, through the Fair Board, have to execute a ground lease for the stadium and development sites, the dirt beneath these developments. Fourth, the sports authority and team then must execute a team lease, the lease of the stadium to the team. Then, the next two steps is the Metro Council has to approve a ticket tax, and then the Metro Council must authorize general obligation bonds. And more on all of those in a minute. But first, the next portion of the resolution describes how the bonds will be paid back, and they will be paid back from three primary sources. First is a ticket tax. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Next is the diverted state and local sales tax for revenue. So everyone who comes to a game and buys a Coke or a T-shirt pays state and local sales taxes. A major portion of that would be redirected towards repayment of the bond debt. And third source of payment on the bonds would be the lease payments from the team. Let me go back and describe the ticket tax in a little bit more detail. First, there is an exemption for Fair Board events. So when the Fair Board is allowed use of the stadium, tickets would not include the ticket tax. But the ticket tax would essentially consist, for the first five years, of $1.75 in addition to the cost of the ticket. And for the first five years, years 1 through 5 of the operation of the stadium, the entirety of that $1.75 would go to the debt service on the bonds, paying back the bond debt service. After the fifth year, that ticket tax would go up 50 cents to $2.25. But you'll see, the $1.75 of it still goes to repayment of the bond debt. The additional 50 cents is now set aside for eventual capital costs that the city bears. And then, at years eight and thereafter, the ticket tax is now a total of $2.50. It's gone up 75 cents. But again, $1.75 of that every year is pledged towards the bond debt payment, and the additional 75 cents now goes to payment of capital expenditures. And again, that's in addition to the diverted state and local sales tax and the lease payments. What is not specifically laid out in the resolution, because it's not something the council has to approve, however, part of the deal is that the team itself would contribute a cash contribution of $25 million for construction of the stadium. Now, to go back through the separate documents that have to precede the issuance of the bonds, first, there is the ground lease. That is between the sports authority and Metro, through the Fair Board. And underneath that document, the main gist of it is this is for the stadium and the development sites, the dirt beneath these developments, that would be essentially authorized by the sports authority to convey in a lease. Next would be a development agreement that the sports authority would then execute with the team. And the primary component of that development agreement is that the team has to fund any stadium costs, construction costs, that aren't covered by the bond proceeds that we've looked at earlier. Next, there would be an execution of a team lease between the sports authority and the team, for, once the stadium is constructed, that stadium would then be leased to the team for a 30-year duration. Well, a few more details about the team lease. Again, this is the agreement that would be between the sports authority and the team for the lease of the stadium facility itself. The annual rent on that stadium, paid by the team, would equal the debt service on the bonds. So for a bond issuance of $225 million, the estimated debt service on that per year is $13 million, so that's the rent. The team, however, gets a credit. They get what the resolution calls a rent reduction. All the state and local sales taxes that are generated at the stadium, that's reduced. And the ticket tax, at least that portion that's directed towards the debt service, that buck 75, is also reduced. On an annual basis, in years 1 through 5, that's predicted to at least hit $4 million, or hoped to hit $4 million. And the team gets a credit for that $4 million. So of the $13 million in total debt service on that bond, they'll be making that payment minus the $4 million. In the next five years, years 6 through 10, that number goes down to $3 million per year. The significant portion here is that if, in any year, we do not, through the diverted sales taxes and the ticket taxes, raise either $4 or $3 million, Metro then pledges as security its non-tax revenues as backup for that underperformance. So a little bit about what non-tax revenues are. It is the rare term in Metro that means exactly what it says. It's the revenues that the Metropolitan Government generates to anything other than taxes. So you'll see several examples in the left-hand column. This includes license and permit fees, franchise fees, payments in lieu of taxes, all the way down, you'll see at the bottom, to just vending machines that the Metropolitan Government owns. All revenues generated, but not through taxes. It doesn't include property taxes, sales taxes, other tax revenues of the city. And that, on the left-hand column, is what's being pledged essentially as a guarantee, should those tax levels not reach $4 million or $3 million any given year. There is an intergovernmental project agreement that the resolution also approves in form. That is between the sports authority and the Metropolitan Government. Again, the resolution states that the council is approving this as deformed, and all this does is essentially formally engages the sports authority to begin the stadium project. It is not executed, however, until after several occurrences. First, a franchise has to be awarded, the ground lease, the development agreement, and the team lease, all have to have been negotiated and executed. And then the GO, or general obligation bonds, have to be approved by the Metropolitan Council. In that agreement, we, the Metropolitan Government, are giving the sports authority all of the sales tax revenues generated at the stadium site, and all the ticket tax revenues, the $1.75 towards the debt service, that goes to the sports authority for them to pay the debt service on the bonds. But again, if those funds are ever deemed insufficient, Metro is pledging its non-tax revenues as security, or surety, for that indebtedness. How are the stadium expenses and revenues handled? That is also laid out in the project agreement in the resolution before the council. As you'll see, all of the operating costs are on the team, all of the utilities, the security, the routine repairs and maintenance, the insurance requirements that is borne by the team. In turn, the team also gets all of the revenues. So the ticket sales, the parking fees, the naming rights, seat licenses, personal seat licenses, the stadium rent, food and drink sales, and the sale of franchise goods, hats and T-shirts that have the team logo on it sold at the stadium, those proceeds go to the team. The long-term capital expenses are on Metro, and that is, you'll see, referred to in the resolution as a capital fund or reserve fund. That's the additional money beyond the buck 75 ticket tax will be placed in a piggy bank, if you will, to handle the eventual capital needs of the stadium. Simple way to think about it is, if on a light pole, a light bulb burns out, that is on the team. That is routine maintenance. In 10 years, if that light pole has rusted and needs to be replaced, that's on Metro, and Metro will be starting this capital fund to pay for those expenses. There are a requirement, or a provision, at the end of the resolution for the issuance of general obligation bonds. That is not specifically approved by the resolution, but it is noted that in a subsequent spending plan, the Metropolitan Council would be expected to issue $50 million of general obligation bonds, in which the Metropolitan Government puts its full faith and credit towards the repayment. The $50 million is proposed to be split into two portions. First, $25 million for stadium-associated infrastructure improvements, the roadways, the sidewalks, the sewers surrounding and underneath the stadium, that would come from that fund. The other $25 million would go to the improvements of the fairgrounds buildings, the existing fairgrounds buildings and facilities. Finally, there's some additional provisions within the resolution that bear note. There is a provision for 20 public use days per year by public. Those cannot conflict with team events, and therefore, scheduling would have to be coordinated between the team and the Fair Board to make sure there is no conflict. It would also have to ensure allowance of all fairgrounds activities pursuant to the Chapter 11 of the Charter. And also, the fairgrounds activities would be allowed access to the concourse of the stadium, the pavilion area surrounding the stadium. A second provision that is worth discussion is the guarantee by the team owners for lease payments. Several council members expressed some concerns about the sufficiency of the guarantee. And just to sort of shorthand those concerns, if the guarantee were executed by an LLC or a limited liability company, against which sometimes you can't get full recourse, there was concern on the part of the council about who's signing it and exactly what's being guaranteed. The administration is currently negotiating that with the owners, and so we hope to have a finalized version shortly. There was a proposed inducement package of 10 acres for development involving a 99-year no-cost lease agreement with the team. That is not expressly discussed in the resolution. It is referenced as an inducement towards the team to enter into this agreement, but there are not explicit details within the resolution itself. Lastly, in order to construct the stadium, demolition of certain premises would be required. The Charter requires that an ordinance be passed by the Metropolitan Council with 27 votes, 2/3 of the council, before that demolition could occur. That is a summary of the ordinance, or rather, the resolution before the Metro Council. Thank you. We'll now be distributing a piece of paper and a pencil for the pop quiz. Is everybody ready? What are the four? No, I'm joking, I'm joking. A couple of things. One, somebody left a cellphone over at the scanners. Secondly, I know there'll be a lot of questions tonight. The council will be, staff will be taking notes of questions. We won't be answering them tonight, but we'll do our best to compile those questions and provide answers generally to all the questions that come up tonight through responses from the administration or the opponent at a later date. If you've ever been to a council meeting, right before we start the public hearing, I say, "All of those in favor, please raise your hands. All of those opposed." Tonight, I'm not going to do that exactly, but I do think it's important for council members just to sort of get a sense of the room. So I'm going to say three things tonight. I'm going to say undecided, supporting, or opposing. So you're going to have three options tonight, because I'm sure that some people here are still undecided about the proposal. So, would all of those who are supportive of the proposal, please raise your hands? All of those who oppose the proposal in its current form? And all of those who are undecided? Okay. Thank you very much. There are some seats, I think, still out here in the middle, so if you'd like to sit down, please don't hesitate to come on up. So, let's get started. If you'd like to come up and speak for two minutes, give your name and address first. And as I said, if you're on a short timeline, come on up first. If you've got a little bit of flexibility, why don't you let somebody else go before you come on up? Thank you very much, and then let's get started.
Okay. We got your mic back here.
Hi, how are you? Okay, we're good. Yeah, it's good. Hi, my name is Heidi. I'm Mil Terrace, and the Wedgwood Houston rep that meets monthly with the race track and fairgrounds personnel during event season to discuss events that impact our area. And I've been very involved for well over a decade in a push from the neighborhood, greater accountability from the property. I will be able to see the stadium from my front yard, and I have attended several meetings interested in answers about impact on our area, and I'm still not getting them. Major things that will affect quality of life and even home value. I moved next to the fairgrounds expecting a fairgrounds, not a multi-sport music venue accommodating up to 30,000 people. For the record, I hope MLS comes to Nashville, and I would support it in other locations if it drove out a couple of the existing uses. I might even help you break ground here. But it really is all the other stuff at the property that I'm concerned about, coupled with a complete lack of acknowledgement that this will drastically impact our area. What are the plans for improving infrastructure? What about traffic and parking mitigation? When will a real discussion take place about the volume of music proposed for these large-scale concerts? These will be three and a half times larger than the properties at Ascend and First Tennessee. I was excited about green space proposed at the fairgrounds, only to find out it will be used for overflow parking, and coupled, and, so that means not very usable green space. If you add up, I'm just going to come closer, I can't stand that, I'm sorry. If you add up all of the, if you add all of the, and you're going to take, like...
Prepare the mic. Okay. Go ahead and finish.
I saw a lovely rendering with the new stadium in lights and downtown in lights and everything else, including all the neighbors in the dark. And I'm sure this very sensitive proposal, they have covered some of the things that I've mentioned, but it feels like they're not very forthcoming. And so, I, the citizen, have elected all of you for your vision and your leadership to ensure that this is right for Nashville, and most certainly, to make sure that the community that's going to impact has a seat at the table. If nothing else, soundproof windows. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to give you a different line.
Okay. All right. Oh. I'll hold that one. There we go.
This one has a blue spook in it or something.
It's all right. There you go.
All right. I'm Shannon McCullough, native of Nashville, and I live about four blocks up on Merritt. I attended a SNAP meeting about a month ago, and this proposal was brought up. And I am all for soccer, for the stadium being built. I do agree about how it will affect the area as far as parking and stuff, because you know how it is with the flea market now, so it could get a little dicey. The one thing that they didn't say at the SNAP meeting was about the 10 acres, and I don't want to be cynical about my politics, so I'm assuming that they just forgot to tell us about that. I don't see where live and residential, live-work and residential, I don't see how that goes with the mission statement of the fairgrounds. I can see a hotel, a very inexpensive one, and then RV hookups in a park that the people that come for the flea market and the people that come for the races can use. The RV park could be year-round, too, especially with the people from the north coming down to get out of the cold. As far as that's what I have, and I would, like I said, I am for the stadium and for the team coming in, but I have questions.
Good evening, and thank you, council members, for being here tonight. I'm Rick Williams, Chairman of Save Our Fairgrounds, and I'm glad you're here to listen to our comments. We are working with the mayor's office and the team owners to try to come to an agreement to support this project. You know, 100 years, over 100 years ago, a family came forward in Nashville and donated all the land we're on tonight for a state fair to always be here. We want to keep that. Now, other prominent Nashville families have come forward to try to improve this property with a proposal for a soccer stadium. We think they can all exist together, and therefore, tonight, we'll be passing out, after this meeting, to the council members some things that we've worked on and negotiated with the mayor's office and other owners of the team to try to make this work. We think we can all use this property for the betterment of Nashville. We can have a soccer stadium, we can have a state fair, we can have a racetrack, and we can have a monthly flea market and all get along. Laura, your new director, is doing a superb job and really loves this property, cares about it, and wants to make it all fit. We want to help make the property better, and thank you for listening tonight.
My name is David Bone. I live in the 19th District, represented by Freddie O'Connell. I am here to speak in favor of the proposal tonight. I support this project because I think it's good for Nashville. It's a mixed-use, mixed-income redevelopment that will more than pay for itself over the life of the project. It also rebuilds facilities of the fairgrounds and allows a nice new facility for the flea market to take place. One of the things that most interests me about this and about the 10 acres is it provides for affordable and workforce housing. As the Metro Council knows, the state legislature spends a lot of time telling us what to do. And one of the things they have told us that we can't do is require affordable housing in private developments. So we have to get really, really creative on how we get affordable housing. This neighborhood is already seeing a lack of affordable housing. I was driving in over on Raines, that's the corner of Fourth and Raines. I don't know how much those cost, but I can afford them. I tell you that right now. But, I mean, workforce, I mean, it's for police, it's for firemen, it's for teachers, it's for people in the community, and we have to get creative about the way we do that, and I think this does that. And it does it in a mixed-use development. It'll be vibrant, it'll be good for the city, it'll help Nashville remain a world-class city. It'll help us grow. We can do big things in Nashville, we can do great things as a world-class city, and this is one of those, and I hope that you support it. Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Sleep. I live in Antioch, Tennessee, in the 31st District, represented by Fabian Bednay. I am the chapter president and founder of a group called The American Outlaws. We are a soccer supporters group. We are a soccer supporters group that is focused on supporting the national team. I know you all have seen the turnout in the past years at the games, the 52,000 last year, the 47,000 the year before. This gives us a great chance to really grow soccer in Nashville. I've been a member of the, I've been in the community for 12 years, and seeing in the past 12 years how soccer can bring the community together, people from all walks of life, no matter where you come from, no matter what your background is. It's a sport that everyone can rally around, and to have a team like that in Nashville, to have something to unify the community like that, would be a huge, huge thing to grow this city. I know there's been various things about what's going on in Columbus with the possibility of that owner, Anthony Precourt, moving the team, but this gives us a chance to have a team owned by people that are from the city, that live in the city, that care about Nashville, and not just some venture capitalist. So I really hope you guys support the stadium.
My name is Michelle Gaskin-Brown. I am the Vice President of Policy for the Nashville Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm standing before you today to let you know that the Nashville Area Chamber 100% supports this soccer stadium proposal. The Chamber... The chamber... The chamber supports policies that promote economic development, invest in public infrastructure, and improve our quality of life here in the Nashville area. We support this stadium proposal because the construction of the stadium will result in more than 3,500 full-time jobs, generate over 130 million in income for Tennessee workers and business owners, and generate over 18 million in state and local tax revenues. Once the soccer team gets here, it is estimated that the team will create over 77 million in annual income, over 1,800 jobs, and over 15 million in annual tax revenues. The chamber has previously supported similar public infrastructure projects that will improve, that have improved our quality of life, such as the Nissan Stadium, Bridgestone Arena, Music City Center, and First Tennessee Park. We hope that each member of the Metro Council will vote in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Mayor, thank you members of the council. My name is Marcus Whitney. I'm part of Nashville Soccer Club, also a Metro Arts Commissioner. And I got into soccer as an adult because of my child. I, I wanted a, I wanted something to do to spend time with my child that would give him a global language for the most popular game in the world, that brings, that makes the entire world a little bit smaller. What I've learned in the last seven years of being deeply, deeply involved in the sport of soccer is that it's beautiful on the field, but it's beautiful off the field. The way that people support each other as families, as friends, as fans of this game is really unlike anything else I've ever seen. And I, I am so excited about the opportunity, I think a very unique opportunity that Nashville has as it continues to grow as one of the great international cities, to bring a professional soccer team to this city that can unify all of the people that live here. Unify all of the people that live here. This is a cultural opportunity that is really not something you can have in any other forum. We have our metro public schools that in a forced way unite our entire community and beyond that, we don't have a lot of institutions that truly speak a universal language. Soccer can be that one thing that can give us a universal language and bring this city even more together. And I think as we continue to grow into a great, global, and notable city of the future, that this is an investment that we'll all look back on and be very proud that we decided to make. Thank you.
Good night, my name is Desmond Armstrong. I live in East Nashville, in Cleveland Park. I am a US national, former US national player, a US national Olympian, and a National Hall of Famer. I reside here in Nashville, have been living here for about five years. Even though the US didn't qualify for the World Cup and Argentina did, we have an awesome opportunity to utilize soccer to be a catalyst for all the young people that play. For my own story, from Washington DC, we moved out to the suburbs and I was introduced to the sport of soccer. Had we not moved to the suburbs, I would not have played. I was able to actually see a professional soccer game because we had a soccer stadium that housed the Washington diplomats. I saw some of the best players in the world in person and from there, I began to dream about the possibility of pursuing a professional career. By God's grace, I was able to do so. I traveled around the world and I believe that in support of the stadium, in support of the stadium being the catalyst to bringing a professional team here, we can be able to help these young children that exist in our city, not just in one quarter of the suburbs, but also downtown, to then dream. This provides us an opportunity to dream, not just the kids, but us as a city. Nashville, in my experience, is a global city. We are bringing a global game here. Nashville is more than just music. Nashville is more than music, it is music and unity. I hope you'll support the bid, I hope you support the vote to bring the stadium here. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Haley Bramer and I play soccer for Tennessee Soccer Club. I think it would be great if the major league soccer team could come to Nashville because it would increase the soccer culture of the city. While many people may call it a game, it can teach and impact individuals in so many ways. Personally, some of the most significant attributes I have acquired from soccer include discipline, how to work as a team, and most importantly, how to win and how to lose. These traits are not only significant on the field, but in being a successful and happy individual. By having an MLS team in Nashville, not only will more soccer facilities be built, therefore increasing opportunities for more to play, but also providing kids with role models. Soccer serves as a tool in uniting the community, which an MLS team will only increase. Thank you and I'm excited for this opportunity for Nashville.
First of all, thank you to the Metro Council, Vice Mayor Riley and Mr. Corny for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Bryson Brown. I attend Montgomery Bell Academy as a sophomore and I play soccer for Tennessee Soccer Club. Nashville is home to me and I was born and raised here in the mid-state. I grew up playing soccer here in Nashville since the age of three and my club has given me the opportunity to play and see soccer at state, national, and international level. I know that there are thousands of other young men, women in Nashville who share these experiences. I believe that soccer can give as much to Nashville as Nashville can give to soccer. With an MLS team here, we can nurture a positive spirit of athleticism, the ability to see professional soccer without leaving the state, and a growing interest in internationally loved sport. This property is a select location for a future MLS team that will be supported by many avid fans. The Tennessee Soccer Club and I respectfully ask the Metro Council to approve the stadium proposal to support the ever-growing passion for soccer that Middle Tennessee, Tennesseans have for this sport. Thank you for your consideration of this exciting proposal.
Good evening, my name is Ben Menko. I'm 16 years old and I'm a sophomore at Franklin High School. Not only am I the varsity goalkeeper there, but I'm also a proud member of Tennessee Soccer Club's 2001 ECNL team. By the time I graduate in 2020, I'll have logged more than 10,000 hours on the soccer field. So it's clear to see that soccer is truly part of who I am and I love it and I wouldn't change anything about it. So I cannot tell you how happy I would be for there to be a professional team here in Nashville. But, you know, then again, don't just take my word for it, take the entire world's word for it. Soccer is by far the most played sport in the world and it continues to grow here in Tennessee and in, in the US at a growing rate. It's the number one youth sport in America and as I've grown, I've personally witnessed the sport grow here in Tennessee and in, and in the country as well. It is quite clear to see that the indescribable passion of soccer is quickly taking the country by storm. Mark Abbott, the president of the MLS, has said that he expects the league to be one of the tops in the world by 2020. And if you look at some of the other great leagues like the English Premier League, which is currently the number one league in the world, they've posted revenues of up to $5.3 billion. And Nashville could find itself at the heart of a league like that by 2020. But until then, it's absolutely imperative that we continue to facilitate the growth of the sport through the acquisition of an MLS team and a stadium to go with it. And all this goes to say that at the end of the day, soccer has truly earned its title as the beautiful game. And its wonders have already captivated the, the minds of people throughout the world and I have no doubt that an MLS team here in Nashville would follow suit. Thank you and I urge the plans to be approved. Thanks for having the opportunity.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Buckaloo and I represent the Girl Scouts of Middle Tennessee. We at the Girl Scouts are very excited to join the community of professional soccer in Nashville area. We support the MLS team and know that the addition of a professional team and setting will increase the opportunities available to girls. There is an overwhelming, there was an overwhelming response to events in October and July from our families. We had 290 families represented, represented from Nashville and the surrounding 38 counties. The girls were able to explore their love for soccer through these experiences. The promise of a professional soccer in Nashville will not only increase the love and interest for the sport with our girls, but they will get the chance to connect with the greater community and the sport of soccer. A professional soccer team means exposure to many a new adventures, experiences, and career opportunities for girls in the Middle Tennessee and surrounding areas. We support MLS in Nashville. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jenny Ruiz and I'm a member of the Mexican National Soccer Team. I also recently moved here... I also recently moved here to Nashville from Seattle where I played for Seattle Rain FC in the National Women's Soccer League, which is the women's equivalent to the MLS. And I'm now a Nashville resident. I am the Girls Academy Director of Coaching at Nashville FC in Bellevue. On my way to work, I travel by a bus stop where I frequently see a young man wearing a Barcelona shirt. I pass the Red Caboose Park where I see a dad and a son playing 1v1 on a little patch of grass off to the side. And then I get to my complex and I watch as adults come from, after a hard day of work to play pickup soccer. And then I arrive with my team of eight girls, four of which, one from Poland, one whose mother's from Brazil, one from Guatemala, and another, and another from Australia. And that is the soccer community here in Nashville. It's the world and this is the world's sport. It's here already. We are so hungry for these girls and these boys to have role models that they can look up to and watch, that put cleats on just like them, where boys don't have to travel all the way to Atlanta to find an MLS game and girls don't have to go all the way to Orlando to watch an NWSL game, where it can be here. And my hope is that all of us can stand in a stadium together and I'm standing next to someone from Brentwood, from Gallatin, from Bellevue, from all across Nashville, from, from Kenya, from Mexico, from Honduras, and we're yelling "Go Nashville" together as we cheer on Nashville. And I am just in support of a stadium, soccer-specific stadium here. Thank you so much for your time.
Hi, my name is Steven Jones. I'm an independent business owner. I lived close by, I lived in Tennessee for 10 years, but prior to that, I served in the United States Navy and there were some... Some of the best relationships I've built while I was in the Navy was playing soccer. So we would, we would have ship games where when we would come into port, we would play other teams, whether it was ships that were in our same readiness group or sometimes if we went to US territory, we'd play other US teams. And some of the relationships I've built that were the strongest in my life, Navy included and also I helped start Nashville Spurs, which is a supporters' club for an English Premier League team. We're supporting teams overseas because we don't have the teams at home for us to root for. So I think those relationships that I've been able to cultivate have grown from the game. I've got friends that I never thought I would, I would end up being friends with. I've got a theater major friend who's weird and I love him to death, like we found something to come together on. So I, I see the, the opportunity for the city and people that don't look like each other to find some common ground and there's, there's never been a time where I felt like we needed it more than now and I feel like Nashville's a hotspot for that, the stars are aligned, you know. I work two, two blocks away, so my goal is to be able to take my clients from my office and walk across the street and go root for a team together and, and help them experience the game. So I think there's a, there's a lot of beautiful things that the game can bring to the city and I hope you guys will consider and make that a reality. So, thank you very much.
Hello, good evening. Bonsoir to you. Buenas noches a todos. Hi, I'm Amanda Martin. I'm an orthopedic surgeon in town and I could tell you a great deal about a game that has taken me around the world, to France, to Spain, to South Africa, and given me the opportunity to serve our nation's youth as one of their physicians. But more importantly, I want to tell you about being Parker in Peyton's Mall. I am a, I'm a female orthopedic surgeon, less than 5%, less than 5% of that 5% might be a sports medicine specialist and less than 5% of that 5% might get the opportunity to serve in a professional capacity. I've had the opportunity to be a consultant with Major League Soccer as well as travel with the US national youth teams. And I can tell you that this is a game that says yes. It says yes over and over and over again when all of society says no. It's a game that says yes to a kid with a ball and a patch of grass. We have an opportunity in this city to be a global city, for a global game. We have an opportunity to be the new Nashville that takes all of them people who are coming here and opens our arms to this and says "Bienvenidos" and "Bienvenu", welcome, "Vilkommen". We have the opportunity to welcome our new future, our hope, and that's our kids. This game can take a little girl from rural Oklahoma to the ends of the earth and bring her back to Middle Tennessee and tell her that she can. I support this stadium. I urge you to support the opportunity for our kids and to stop telling them the things that they can do while showing them that they can't. This stadium, this team, this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity tells 40,000 kids in Middle Tennessee who play soccer that we will show you the way, that you can be anything, no matter where you come from, no matter if it's a suburb that is very well-to-do, or you come from a small apartment building on the outskirts of town or in the middle city. Anyone from anywhere can be anything and the game of soccer says yes.
I'm afraid to touch this. There's a guy in the back that'd be very angry if I don't tell you that I'm Lucas Leverett. I live in District 21 at 1,0339th Avenue North. We good? Okay. You guys know I'm no stranger to cynicism because I email all of you quite a bit. It's refreshing to see logical discussion here of a fantastic compromise under a mayor who was the only candidate that didn't toss half-baked fiction and placations at the electorate. We, we don't have a lot of time, I've got a whole list, I'll send you later, but I'm gonna pick a couple of these for balance. But I would start off by asking that all of you show spine when you negotiate with CSX because I can't be the only person here that witnessed half this town shut down by that company's tracks this evening on the way to come see you. And we can't keep that plan that way and put a stadium here. Can the plan include historic nods to the fairgrounds and racing and the forms of monuments and museums to help meet the historic needs of the property and set the stage for inevitable relocation of things like the track once enough political change occurs? But without erasing history at hand, which is non-existent in anything but the dirt underneath most of these older spaces that we're standing in today? Can this be kept off the polls and away from the efforts of mobilized special interests like the ones who permanently altered the founding documents of our city for an acute special interest? And it saddened, or it saddled us with current status of being bound by law to the state and inappropriately a rural state fair in a deep-city location. I, I think the, the murkiness of the vague language is saddling all of you. I am very proud that you've negotiated this situation that less than a third of the electorate was able to put you in. And I support this project and I support your support of this project. I'll be glad, like everybody, to put this whole properties issues behind us and move forward with this compromise and a solution for all concerns. Thank you very much.
My name is Tim Williams. I live in Bellevue, 37221. I'm gonna start by saying that sometime in 1997 or 1998 in my apartment on Elliston Place, I made a pretty bold and, and confident proclamation that hockey would never work in Nashville. I'm pretty sure I was wrong about that at this point. But, but I say that because after you see the, the energy and the, the drive that we saw this last spring, it's hard not to imagine a soccer team working in Nashville. And just to quickly say, to echo some of the sentiments earlier, the narrative that surrounds our city now in the media, national media, is, is change, change, change. But what I think we see with this team and the possibility of having this team is inclusive change. Inclusive for multiple communities, people from across different socioeconomic statuses, cultures, and something that goes beyond 11 players on a field with the ball and creates a culture around it that we can find civic pride in. So I gladly and strongly support this team coming to Nashville.
Hi. My name is Liam Akhali. I live on Stanback Avenue in Cleveland Park, but I work around the corner. I own a small manufacturing company that makes guitar straps on the corner of Napoleon and Dunn Avenue. So this proposal would affect my life on a daily basis, even though I don't live in the neighborhood. I'd just like to make the point that, as we're all aware, if Nashville is gonna receive an MLS expansion, we're gonna have to have a stadium that's in the downtown urban core. And I think this location and the proposal is a great way to do that, in a way that's not gonna necessarily harm any of the traditional uses of the fairgrounds. I think it's not mutually exclusive for the MLS team to succeed in this location and all of the previous uses of the fairgrounds to work as well. And I will say that I truly believe that soccer is the sport of the future. My dad played college football. So did his brother. My cousin and I played college soccer. The sport is changing along with the demographics in our community, and it's a wave that Nashville has a once-in-a-generation chance to ride and capitalize on. If we get an MLS team, we're likely gonna be in a good spot to get a host city bid in 2026 for the World Cup. If you know anything about the World Cup, it's what the Olympics should be and the way it brings the global community together in your city because it's a sport that people truly care about in every country in the world, and they really care about it in the US as well, and it's only growing. It's the sport of the 21st century. We have an opportunity to make an investment in that and reap the benefits for the next 100 years and beyond. It's absolutely gonna be true. We can either be a part of it or not.
My name is Bob Blair. I live on Mashburn Road, which is just up the road a little bit. I've lived in this area 50 years. I'm in the minority. I have nothing against soccer. It's just a deal that's going on with the land that we're giving away for the houses to be built on. According to the paper today, they said this property is worth $1 million an acre. We're gonna give it away. They want 51 parking spaces. I just can't see it. Why not put it somewhere else rather than here? You've took everything away from us. You took Fair Park away. You took the fanfare away. Everything that we ever had here. I'm a tenor to the races. I'm a tenor to the flea market. You're trying to take everything away from the regular working people. I have a business in this area. Like I said before, I have nothing against soccer. It's just that I've never been to a soccer match, don't intend to attend one. I'm totally against it, and I'm totally against this plan. I think as a council, you need to look at this thing very good. As a businessman, I never sign nothing unless I look at it. You need to look at this thing real good. I mean, everybody's all excited because the soccer's coming to town, but you need to look at this thing real good. It's like signing a piece of paper at the bank. Don't give our property away. This grounds was put here for the state fair. You've turned the state fair into carnival. It's all up on the hill now. It used to stretch all the way to Nolanville Road. So many things have been taken away from the regular folks, and that's why I'm here tonight. And I'm in the minority, and as a man said before, I did my time in service. I did my time in... I was one of the fortunate ones that came back. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Renata Soto. I am a resident of District 24, Mrs. Murphy's. But tonight, I'm here actually as Director of Conexión Americas. We are a nonprofit organization located exactly 1.6 miles from here at Casa Saflan on Nolanville Pike. And much has been said already about how even this conversation is possible thanks to the presence of immigrants and refugees and the love of soccer that we have brought to the city. So let me actually speak about two things that we care equally about: gender equality and food. Last night, Conexión Americas was really honored to host the MLS team for a conversation about women in soccer. And we heard former players talk about equal pay for equal play, a conversation that I don't think football or hockey elicits. And it was really great to hear how this conversation was happening because of the conversation that we're having here today. So I agree with my colleague from the Girl Scouts that unlike other sports, other professional sports that we have in the city, I think that soccer and professional soccer really is an opportunity for also girls to see themselves be athletes, professionals in the field, or as doctors to support them. I also want to talk about food. You may know that we have a culinary incubator where we support food trucks and entrepreneurs who are catering companies and wholesalers. And I believe that the economic impact of the stadium located here will be not just because of what will happen on one day of the game, but for what it may mean for small entrepreneurs in our community. I am really excited to know that when I approached the owners of MLS, Mr. John Imbren in particular, about the idea of making sure that the opportunity for concessions to be a place where newer entrepreneurs could get a chance, not only to bring the global flavors of our city to the stadium, and we get to enjoy and make the stadium truly international, but also as an opportunity for entrepreneurs to give a shot and be part of that and share their food and artistry, but also benefit from the economic impact and be part of that. So I would say that the world already has come to Nashville, and it is time for us to score a goal and bring soccer to Music City. Thank you.
We've been going for about an hour. So I'm not cutting anybody off. Don't think I am. But one thing I did forget to say at the beginning, and I'm afraid people will start to leave, so I want to announce it now. Starting tonight at midnight on the council website at council.nashville.gov, there'll be a place for you to express your opinion about the proposed resolution, the deal that is gonna be before the council will be up for about 10 days. So before people started to leave, I just wanted to make sure you knew that that would be up. Go ahead. Your turn.
My name is Joe Smithson. I live at 4714 Delia Road in District 28. I've lived there since 1991, and in the last 20 years, we've been asked to fund the Titans, the Predators, the Music City Center, and countless other projects with tax dollars that have benefited a few. But my neighborhood in those 20 years has never seen a sidewalk project, school built. There's been one park built that has been neglected since it was built. And there's a sidewalk right up the road from my house that's been caved in for two years and has never been fixed. Now, we have funded all these projects with the money coming into the city, but that money hasn't come back to my neighborhood. I would like to know, one, there's been zero return on investment in my neighborhood for all these other projects. One, could any of you possibly tell me when I could expect to see some benefit from that? And now you're asking me to help fund a quarter of a billion-dollar project for another sports team that most likely would not benefit me. So if anybody could answer... There's a minute left. If any of you would like to give me any answer to that, just jump on in and do it. Anybody? Anybody? Any of you?
This is not the format we're gonna have tonight?
I'm just... I've asked a question, and I think it's a very legitimate question because very few people have benefited from these projects, and everybody has helped fund them. And I think it ought to be answered. Why has it not benefited everybody in the city when everybody in the city has been asked to fund it and are being asked to fund another giant pie-in-the-sky project that will only benefit the developers and the people that are employed by that project? So, anybody?
If you'll let me go just for a second. Totally legitimate question. I didn't catch your address.
4714 Delia Drive in Ms. Virture's District.
All right. Ms. Virture is here. As I said, the format, if we answered everybody's questions here tonight, we wouldn't have a chance to hear from people.
Well, I've asked that question for a long time and never got an answer, and I would just wonder at what point I will get an answer or we'll see some benefit, one.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. Mr. Brierley. Council unleashed the lead, and I live over off 981 Murphy'sboro Pike.
Pull the mic a little bit closer. Get a little bit closer to him.
I live over at 981 Murphy'sboro Pike. I want sidewalks. I've almost been hit over there. You all can fill all this and fund all these projects, but when it comes to the poor and poor neighborhoods, we get nothing. Nothing. Absolutely nothing. And I see not fair to this at all. And Mr. Brierley, I remember back in 1965, when your dad, or uncle, or whoever he was, said he was gonna rebuild it bigger and better. You know? And I'm watching... What about the parking? What about the traffic through the neighborhood? I lived up here for 14 years. You know, what about all that? I mean, people need to think, I'd like to have some sidewalks before I get killed. You know what I'm saying? Actually, I'd like to have some more cops so I don't get killed. But really, what... I don't support it. As long as it's off the back of the taxpayer, you know what? No way. I won't support it. It won't happen. I love this piece of property. It's near and dear, and it's sentimental to me as well. And we need to look at what history is here. This does not fit in as history. Thank you.
My name's Lane Dudley. I live in Goodlitsdale, Davidson County, Door Drive. I just... Maybe I will say that I definitely support this. Soccer is definitely the beautiful game, but I can understand what the previous folks have said. I think it would be good on the part of the people who will own the stadium and the team to go a step further and commit to something called fan-first pricing on concessions. The stadium in Atlanta, Mercedes-Benz Stadium, committed to fan-first pricing, basically saying, "We're not gonna gouge you when you come to the stadium and wanna buy food and buy beer." That might make it feel a little bit like it was for the city and not just for Bud Light. I think it would also be good if this stadium reflected Nashville in such that the vendors weren't necessarily Bud Light and Miller Lite, but were possibly some of the brewers we have in the city. Or if some of the... If some other food vendors were local franchises that make food here, so that when people come to Nashville from around the world and they only go to see a soccer game and leave, at least they can see a little bit of what Nashville's about when they eat and drink at the stadium. And maybe another concession by naming the team, maybe you could work in the racers or something associated with the racetrack. I think the biggest point I can make is that the stadium just shouldn't shine Bud Light across the skyline and maybe should look a little bit like Nashville when you walk into it, so the stadium itself is somewhat of a museum to Nashville.
Good evening, Metro Council. I am Angie Stiff, and I am actually from Lewisburg, Tennessee. However, I do work in Davidson County. I am representing soccer moms tonight. I have a daughter that has played soccer since she was four years old, and she is now 16 years old, and she will play college soccer. So I have watched her dream and imagine since she was four about this game, and I've watched her grow over the last 10 years playing soccer. I have lived in Nashville and in the Middle Tennessee area for 24 years, so I have loved the growth that I have seen in our city and the opportunities that our city has to offer. Bringing the MLS to Nashville is just another feather in our cap. There are so many families in Nashville and the surrounding areas that would support it. Having MLS in Nashville will change youth soccer, as you have heard from many tonight. It will give the youth of our city something to look forward to, something to strive to. In addition, it keeps our kids focused and out of trouble. And as a mother of a teenager, that is something that I worry about daily. On behalf of the soccer moms of Tennessee Soccer Club and the community, we all support the MLS coming to Nashville and the fairgrounds. The fairgrounds, just to point out, is in a great location for families to come to from all over the region. It sits right in the middle of all the interchanges, north, south, east, and west. The MLS would make a huge impact on our Nashville community, and so many families that love soccer will support it. My family and friends will all support the MLS coming to Nashville, and we will support the fairgrounds. I urge you, the Metro Council, to approve this plan. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, council members. Thank you for your time and service. My name is Terry Voe, and I live in 18 Clayborne Street, 37210, in District 17. I want to share my support of the stadium, the MLS team for Nashville, and the fairgrounds. The stadium is not just for the team, but an opportunity for our neighborhoods, our community, and our region to shine. Just as stated earlier, I believe that our city can come together and collaborate to make this stadium happen. I can't wait to go with my friends to a future mixed-use facility and watch professional soccer, shop at the flea market, and exercise. Soccer is a sport that is accessible to everyone. I just attended a packed row filled with individuals who are excited about the panel on women in soccer at Conexión Americas. They discussed that playing soccer isn't just recreational, but a career and reality for both men and women. Whether we are playing soccer, coaching soccer, or cheering on our future World Cup soccer players, soccer is great for boys, girls, men, and women. Soccer brings people together, and I'm confident in our local owners and your leadership. Thank you for hearing my comments.
My name is Ann Barnett. I live at 618 Larchwood Drive in Donaldson. And I am a soccer player. I'm a soccer fan. But my support of this stadium is completely conditional because this isn't about whether or not you like soccer. It's about what it's gonna do to our city, what the impacts on our city are gonna be, and specifically how it's gonna benefit everyone, right? Nashville's unemployment is really low. It's like 3%, but the poverty rate is almost 20%. So that means there are a lot of folks who are working for poverty wages in our city. So I want to talk about the jobs that are gonna be created. The Chamber of Commerce said that there were gonna be 3,500 jobs created. We don't need more minimum-wage jobs. We need these jobs to be good jobs that pay living wages, and I would propose that those jobs have a targeted hiring strategy. We are sitting in the middle of a promised zone right now, and the promised zones are areas where poverty and unemployment is concentrated. And so I would propose that we have good jobs that have targeted hiring so that the people that are living in this neighborhood can benefit from those jobs and be lifted out of poverty. Yeah. So without community benefits and without specifically defined and agreed-upon community benefits in a community benefits agreement, I don't think that we should pass this plan. It's all about, for me, it's all about how it's gonna lift folks in Nashville up. Thank you.
Thank you for hosting this event. My name is Jonathan Barton of 763 Huntington Parkway. I have been playing soccer since I was 10 years old. I went on to play travel soccer and college soccer. I was supporting soccer when they used to make fun of you for supporting soccer, so I've been through a lot with it. I have a baby girl. She's 14 months old, and one day, I hope that she is the first-ever female to play in the English Premier League, preferably for Arsenal. And my city council lady often sees me playing in my backyard soccer, trying to relive the glory days. I play soccer with a lot of the guys that are here, pickup soccer, as well as the local leagues. So it's a huge passion of mine. I do support a team that we all have the ability to support right now, and I'm a season-ticket holder for the Nashville Soccer Club. So I agree with what everybody's saying. Soccer is a blessing. It's the world's language. I support MLS coming to Nashville. What I don't support are handouts for billionaires. I don't support the stadium and its current proposal of offering taxpayer money to give to wealthy people. I'm an entrepreneur myself. I am against picking winners and losers. I think it's a little unethical to ask poor people and middle-class people to support billionaires, the top 1% of our society. These gentlemen, it's a bit disingenuous for them to ask for taxpayer money. Many billionaires, and I don't know what assets they own, but many billionaires own different properties, planes, jets, yachts, that they can sell instead of asking poor people. billionaires, the top 1% of our society. These gentlemen, it's a bit disingenuous for them to ask for taxpayer money. Many billionaires, and I don't know what assets they own, but many billionaires own different properties, planes, jets, yachts, that they can sell instead of asking poor people to subsidize them. So I ask you, no. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shane Smiley, Brush Hill Road, Nashville. I'm a founding member of the historic Tennessee State Fairgrounds Foundation, a 501(c)(3) that has been started to help benefit the fairgrounds. I want to start by saying I'm in favor of MLS coming to Nashville. I think it can be a great thing for the fairgrounds, I think it'd be a great thing for our city. However, there's some issues on the deal. And one of the things that I think needs to happen with MLS coming in and these activities is that they come into the property and follow the same guidelines that the other functions that happen on this property throughout the course of the year have followed for decades. For instance, every event on this property, including in this building, pays a lease payment to the fairgrounds. They pay a percentage of concessions, and they pay all the parking. That goes to help the fairgrounds stay in the black and operate. The other thing that I think we really need to take a look at is the procedure that we're working with. Putting the resolution first is ignoring the referendum that was put forward, and a lot of the people in this room voted for the referendum, which dictates that any building that's going to get torn down on this property requires 27 votes of the council. If you approve the funding and you send that off to MLS, and we get a franchise and come back and then have to decide on 27 votes to tear down any buildings, you've put the cart before the horse. So I'm asking you as a council to stand up, file an ordinance, go through the process of the caption bill to tear down these buildings. If this deal is approved, go through those 27 votes, and then, and only then, vote on the funding for the bill. The other thing I'm seeing tonight, and I love to see the turnout, I think the energy is great and what it can bring to the city. I am hearing a lot of people from out of county that are speaking, and I'm wondering if they're willing to, as supportive as they are, if they're willing to find some way for the other counties to help support this bill as well. So, thank you so much. Have a great evening. Thank you for being here.
One second. So we're making good progress, hearing great comments, so that we have a sense of how long we're going to go. I would ask everybody who would like to speak to please get in line now, and unless you get in line now, you wouldn't have a chance to speak. And if we wrap up in a reasonable time, I'm sure council members will be glad to stick around and talk to anybody who is interested in having a conversation with a specific council member. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandra Colwell. I live in Davidson County. Just like to reiterate, I drove around the parking lot, and a lot of the vehicles here are out of Davidson County. They are not the ones that are going to have to pay for this. I really don't think they should have a voice. I have seen on your slide screen earlier that they get, the MLS gets a 99-year no-cost lease. The racetrack pays the lease. We don't get a free lease. The last seven years, we got a year-to-year lease. There's no way to improve the racing with a year-to-year lease. Nobody's going to pay $40,000 to build a car to come race at a track that may not be here next year. I know now that you guys are looking at a five-year lease, but I also know you turn down a 15-year lease and a 30-year lease. I think we should be given the same opportunity and the same plan that the soccer field gets. They get a 30-year no-lease, we should get a 30-year no-pay lease too. Davidson County pays for everything. We've had to pay for hockey, we've had to pay for football, we've had to pay for their stadium, the baseball stadium. I don't go to any of those. Why can't we put a $10 tax on every ticket and let the people that want to go to the soccer games pay for the soccer field instead of taxing Davidson County to death? I don't have a problem with them being here, just let the people who go pay for it. Definition of a fairgrounds does not include a hotel, a soccer stadium, or a mixed-use. You let the buildings dilapidate, never putting any money in them, now you're tearing them down because you want to put a stadium here. I don't care if you put a stadium, I just hope you give the same consideration to the racetrack. Thank you for your time.
My name is Anthony Olivier. I'm from South Nashville. I'm one of Mr. Bidnay's constituents. I'm not a sports fan, I'm not a soccer fan, I'm a Nashville fan. If this will make our city and our communities better and stronger, then I support it. As Ann Barnett mentioned, it needs to benefit everyone, though, not just a handful. I'm also a union steward, and I am a very big organized labor fan. I know that Metro has a large contingent of SEIU members. I was one of the one that worked for Metro. This being a Metro project, I fully advocate that it be built with a large part of union labor. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you all.
Hi, my name's Adrian Mizell. I'm from Thompson Station, but I work here in Nashville. I've been working in construction here in Nashville for about 17 or 18 years, just off of Armory Drive down here. If a stadium is going to be built, I'd like to see it built with fair wages and safe working conditions. I'd like to see it go to high-road contractors and union labor. Large projects like these are especially important to our apprentices, giving them the skills and the opportunities to build a better Nashville for our future. I'd like to see local hires and good living wages, and I think the best way to do that is with union labor.
My name's Joe Deal. First, I appreciate getting to move forward in the line. I've got a bad hip. I live at 509 Camden Drive, lived here in Nashville for 39 years. I worked for a nonprofit for the 39 years that works with a lot of underprivileged and at-risk children and families here in the city. I appreciate all the impassioned speeches on the values of soccer, and I believe that. I'm not opposed to the soccer coming here. I just feel very strongly that this location is not the place for it. I don't know if there's been a traffic survey done. I do a survey two or three times a day. I live less than a mile from here. It took 15 minutes to get here at 5:15 this afternoon. That's ridiculous. We have five or six railroad crossings. We have Wedgwood that goes from four lanes to two lanes when it gets to the back of the fairgrounds. We have railroad crossing on Nolzal Road. You have railroad crossing at Fourth Avenue near Dudley Center. You have the railroad trestle on Wedgwood, but it's only one and a half lanes in each direction. That's a CSX thing. Forget ever doing anything with CSX, they're law unto themselves. You might deal with Tennessee Eastern as far as the crossing on Bransford and the one at Nolzal Road in Craighead, but the railroad issue, the whole traffic pattern, and every day already, all of the streets coming from west to east, all the side streets, are backed up with people trying to get to Nolzal Road. Fourth Avenue backs up sometimes all the way to Chestnut. Most afternoons, it takes me 20 minutes to get from Lakeview Auto Body to the Craighead. That's ridiculous. It's not that soccer is bad. It's not that I'm opposed to it. I just don't think that this is a good location for it. I question whether or not proper studies have been done. I know this thing has been rushed through because the opportunity came available to get a team, but when I read your faces, council people, I get the distinct impression that this is a done deal, and that's not good. That's not good. Take some time. If you're supposed to, if we're supposed to get a team, maybe it isn't December, maybe it's a year from now or two years from now. But this community does not have the infrastructure, and you cannot build the infrastructure to support this because there's not enough space. Thank you very much.
I'm going to bang the gavel, not at him, but at the people behind the room, so that they'll be a little bit quieter. Thanks. And I will ask you to keep it to two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm Dr. Dick Dickerson. I just had my top teeth pulled, so you'll have to excuse me. I am, live on Bonna Creek in Hermitage. I am here, I will say that I was president of the Metro Nashville Education Association when most of you were little boys and girls. Some of you weren't even born. It was right after Metro Government came into being. I went on to work at the White House and also was state superintendent in Kentucky. I have a great interest in this particular sport. I went to school at the American University in Cairo and played. I was the only American on the team, and I played the sport and loved it, and I do support that. I've attended 76 state fairs here, 76. I don't know if anybody else has attended that many or not, but I have loved them all. I was here when they had the Great Fire and burned down much of the property. I attended every council meeting for 12 years, along with some of your parents, probably. I am the president of the Vendors Association at the flea market and have been the president for several years. We have 5,000 total vendors throughout the year, and about 2,500 are members. And we want you to be sure and look after all parts of this fair, the fairgrounds. The money needs to be there to look after all of it, and we appreciate your consideration.
My name is George Groon. I live at 915 Old Lebanon Dirt Road in Hermitage, and my business, Groon Guitars, is located near here at 2128th Avenue South. I appreciate the chance to be able to speak to you. The fairgrounds referendum was passed by approximately 73% with the intention that it was to preserve and also encourage the enhancement and improvement of the fairgrounds and its facilities. The fairgrounds is currently visited by as many as 0.6 million visitors a year coming to the flea markets, exotic animal shows, such as the one that was this past weekend, flea markets, of which the biggest of the year will be this coming weekend. There's numerous events that bring people here. In fact, this is probably the most visited venue in all of Nashville's publicly-owned facilities, and it's probably also the only one that breaks even. Anything that gets in the way of that would be something I'm not in favor of. Now, I think that MLS can coexist, but I have serious reservations with the 10 acres and affordable housing on this site, and I'm concerned that there's $225 million for a stadium, $25 million for infrastructure, free 10 acres, probably spending at least $250,000 or $300,000 million on that, and only $25 million for the fairgrounds itself for improvement. That's 5% or less. He who has the goal of rules, and I'm concerned that the fairgrounds will no longer be a fairgrounds as we know it, unless we do something to protect that.
Hey, my name is Shay. I reside at 510 Heritage Drive in Madison, Tennessee. My councilperson is Nancy Von Reese. And I probably have the unpopular opinion in the room, because I am not blinded by the allure and excitement of an MLS team in Nashville, because I am more concerned about the community benefits agreements that will come along with the team. In addition to the stadium, the ownership team will be granted 10 acres of prime public land to build housing, commercial space, and a hotel. Let's be clear, the ownership team will make most of their profits from this development rather than the team itself, the MLS team itself. As a member of the community, I demand that a community benefit agreement will be put in place that will ensure that the public funds will be used to better the community. If it does not benefit the community, it will just be another gig in the Music City. There are communities in our city, as Ann Barnett brought up earlier, that have seen an increase in poverty. So this is through Music City Center Project, this is through the First Tennessee Project. These communities have still seen an increase in poverty. So I think it is up to the council to ensure that we have high-road employers that employ this building, that lead to a sustainable wage. A project this big brings a lot of opportunities for people that are living in the promise zones. Like I said, let's not give all the money to the ownership team, let's make sure Nashville has a benefit, and this is not just another gig in the Music City.
Chris Farrell, 905 Tower Place. First of all, thank you all for your service to the city. It was my very first night on the Metro Council when we were asked to vote on the bond package for the Titan Stadium. As a brand-new council member, I was not at all prepared to make a $300 million bond commitment. I voted no, because I was concerned that the city wouldn't have the capacity to do some of the things that I had run on and said that we ought to do. But I was wrong. The city did have the capacity to build the Titan Stadium and build schools. It had the capacity to build libraries and sidewalks, and even a convention center later. I'm for this because I like watching soccer. I spent the last decade watching my kids play, and I want to continue to be able to watch with them as they become adults. But I hope you will vote for it, knowing that this is the best stadium proposal that's come in front of the city in the 22 years that I've been paying attention, far and away the best. I know you know the difference between general obligation bonds and revenue bonds, and that the fact is that it's not just the residents of Davidson County that will be paying for this, but every person who buys a ticket will be paying off this debt. And so these people from around the state who have said that they're for this, they can contribute to it by buying tickets to every game. I plan to buy tickets. I hope you will vote yes, and know that the city can have both soccer and sidewalks, soccer and affordable housing, soccer and schools, because we have the capacity to do all of those things. Thanks for your service.
Good evening. My name is Brian Carlson. I live in Franklin, Tennessee, and I will be one of the ticket holders who will come to an MLS game here on this location. I'm a father of four soccer players, and I also have the privilege of serving as president of Tennessee Soccer Club, one of the largest competitive youth soccer clubs in the state of Tennessee with over 1,500 kids. I have lived in Nashville for 10 years, and I work at Vanderbilt University Medical Center. I could not be more excited with what I see happening in our great city, and especially the prospects of bringing professional soccer to our area. I want to commend the Metro Council, Mayor Berry, and MLS leadership on the tremendous work done to date, and I could not be more excited about the plan that has been put together and stand here tonight representing those 1,500 members of Tennessee Soccer Club to show our support for the fairgrounds, the stadium, the MLS bid, and the city of Nashville. In my role as president of Tennessee Soccer Club, I have been privileged to witness the unifying power of the international game of soccer. This past summer, we were forced to be visited by the leadership of Tottenham, the English Premier Soccer Club, who played an international friendly match here in Nashville in July. While visiting with them, they asked us over and over again, "What is going on in Nashville? We're hearing great things about your city, and we're also hearing great things about soccer in it." I think it says something to me about our city and soccer in it, that they were taking the time to reach out to learn what we were doing. It also emphasized the great opportunity we have with our bid and stadium proposal. I strongly support the stadium proposal, the bid to bring MLS to Nashville, and all the rest... the residents of Nashville who stood here tonight to talk about the other things that concern them. That's very important for you to consider, but at the end of the day, this is going to bring regional unification by bringing people from all over the state of Tennessee and there beyond to our great community. I urge you to do the same and support. Thank you.
My name is Jay Levitt. I live at three oh-one Demumbrian Street. I'm in Freddie O'Connell's district. I would love to see a soccer team come here. I would love to see a great stadium built in our city. I just hope that you, as the city council, help negotiate a better deal for those of us who are Davidson County taxpayers. Currently, this proposal commits us as taxpayers to spend in excess of a hundred million dollars over the thirty-year lease period. Not only the fifty million at the front, but it also leaves us with uncapped capital improvement costs that if we take a look at Nissan Stadium, if we take a look at Bridgestone Arena, we know over the thirty years, those will run well in excess of fifty million dollars. I, again, I hope we do get a team, I hope we get a great stadium. Instead of spending the rest of my time talking about negatives with this, I'm going to ask you, please, to consider four quick changes to this agreement, four ways that we can make this better for us as taxpayers. First, remove the ten acre development inducement plan from this off the top. Let's please debate that a year, two years from now after we've decided if we're going to have a team or not. Second, please place a cap on future capital improvement expenses so we're not stuck dumping money into a program with a blank check. It seems like it would be fair to make that in line with what is being collected by the ticket taxes. Anything above that then would need to be covered by the team. Third, let's please install a plan to protect us taxpayers if the team happens to leave early, like what we're seeing with the Columbus Soccer Team, like what we almost experienced here in Nashville with the Predators. Please, if we get some protections on that, that helps us as taxpayers. And fourth, please, let's engage USA Soccer and MLS to give us more events here. If MLS agrees to host All-Star Games here, drafts here, league events here, if USA Soccer agrees to host national team events here in magnitude of fifty, sixty over the next twenty years, those would really help allay any of my concerns on this. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is William Cardenas. Uh, I live on thirty-nine sixty Bell Road, Hermitage, Tennessee. I've been in Nashville for eighteen months. I love Nashville and I love soccer. My father came to this country from Columbia to play soccer. If you've never been to a soccer game, you have no idea what you're about to get into. It's a crazy set of fans, but I'm here to speak about the development, the construction. Um, I've seen the good, the bad, the ugly. Uh, I'm a proud La Union member, a laborer. I do construction work and I'm proud to present to you some future apprentices, people that want to learn how to do construction and, uh, and do it right, do it safe, and be productive. They're community members that are from your district. You guys have an opportunity right now to set an example for development with community benefits agreements, mandating training, uh, including apprenticeships. And, uh, I just want to say that, uh, as you go forward, please, we need good jobs, we need safe working conditions, and we need a living wage. There's too many people here that cannot afford to live with the wages that are set here. You need at least fifteen dollars an hour to survive in Nashville. My rent in Hermitage is twelve hundred dollars. Uh, if I continue my lease past December, it will be fourteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars. How can anybody pay that, uh, ten dollars or twelve dollars? We need sustainable jobs, we need pathways to careers. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
My name's Nicole, Nashville, Tennessee, Davidson County, and, um, I have been working in construction for a while now. And, uh, as a union building trades member, I believe that workers, um, who better themselves deserves opportunities on projects that their tax money pays for. My local union trains people who are willing to work hard, um, where they're learning a skill for life and pass it on. Um, there is a lot of work in Nashville, but few of the projects are supporting a real training program. With deep poverty in some of our neighborhoods, we are missing an opportunity to bring people up. Uh, that's why I'm asking Metro to build this project with federally registered apprenticeship programs and MLS stadium could change Nashville for the better, but we can't do business as usual.
Sorry about that. Uh, my name is Mark Townsend. I live in five-ten Heritage Drive out in Madison, Tennessee. I've been doing construction for about ten years. Uh, I've been doing labor work, uh, safety work, the whole nine. Um, I've seen the city grow fast. Cranes everywhere, about seventeen, twenty. Every time I look around, there's more, there's more coming around. Um, and there's jobs opening, but they don't lead nowhere. A lot of dead-end paths. Uh, if you're going to have this soccer stadium here, why not create something that's beneficial for not only the workers but for the community as well? And for the workers, uh, it's been too much of leading through temp services. A lot of dead ends, not, nothing that we can uphold and create a career. Me and my team, we're certified, we're trained, we have the correct knowledge on not only using equipment but safety in walking around sites. We can help others, not even only ourselves. For our people our age, there's not a lot of opportunities and if we're going to work at the soccer stadium, why not put our pay up? Why not put benefits in our backs? Why not create something that we can help for our families and not only ourselves? And, uh, I just don't want another gig, I want a career. I want to start something and, and carry something with pride and with something, you know, that's important to me, not only me but Nashville as well. Thank you.
My name is Emmanuel Thornton. Uh, I live at four-ten Green Harbor Court, uh, Old Hickory, Hermitage area. Me and my family have been living in the middle of Tennessee since two thousand, so I'm a local. Did my last two years at Tennessee State, so I've seen the change, uh, happening and going on. Um, a lot of people my age, uh, are looking for opportunities, experience, um, in different ways and construction, um, as we see is everywhere in Nashville and that's one thing for us to better, a career path in. If you do choose to build the soccer stadium, choose local unions, hire, like we've been saying all night, hire community, people that have been in the community, you know, years upon years and have, uh, unions, certain programs for ultra-tens, ultra-thirties, safety regulations, you know, help people get that experience and all this opportunity that's coming to Nashville. So, I agree, yes, and hopefully you do too. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ryan Young. I live in Goodlettsville. I worked in construction for about four years and I'm a proud member of La Union three-eight-six. I believe this project is good not only for me but also for our future as our apprentices need to know and learn how to do the jobs to help Nashville's future. Sorry, I've got my wisdom coming out, so it really hurts. There's a lot of work in Nashville to do, not only now but also for the future, and I think the future is now, so let us help you and also help us for Nashville's future. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Metro Council members. I really appreciate your time and listening, uh, some of our apprentices tonight, and I also appreciate the folks that, uh, stayed to listen to their fellow citizens. My name's Ethan Link and I live at ten thirteen North Sixth Street in Council District Five. And, uh, I wanted to let, um, the council know that, uh, what these apprentices and, uh, what the folks who are looking to work on this project have at stake is great. This is the biggest project that will be built under, you know, this council term. Um, it's an enormous opportunity to learn from the lessons of past projects and provide real community benefits to, uh, the kind of workers that we all always say we want to help, the kind of folk we always say we're going to do something for. And, uh, we have an opportunity with you shaping this project. Uh, just a couple of things that I think are important for everyone to know about where the status of construction workers is right now in Nashville. You know, seeing all the cranes and seeing all the development and seeing people, uh, you know, walk on and off of these job sites, it's exciting and, um, and there's nothing that anyone can say to tamp that excitement down. Everyone knows it's great. But, uh, one out of four Nashville construction workers in a recent survey, uh, said that they had to resort to working through a temp agency to get a job in the last year. Now, you might say, "Well, that's just the way construction is now," but it's not. Um, it is the, it's the highest percentage of workers in a survey of six southern cities that, uh, that reported that. Similarly, one in four of those same workers, uh, said that they had been injured at some time in their work, uh, as a construction worker, and only nineteen percent of that group said that their medical bills were covered by Workerscom. That means we have to have higher standards and Metro sets the tone for how that happens. Thank you very much.
My name is Michael Callahan Kapoor. My address is fourteen seventeen Calvin Avenue, um, in District Six. Um, I am a lover of the beautiful game. I've played soccer all my life, um, and I play pickup soccer around town and it's a beautiful community and, um, I'm excited about the project, but I think a few things definitely have to change in order for it to work for all Nashvillians. Um, I would like to see community benefits right up front in this project and I would like the council to talk a lot more and think a lot more about affordable housing will work in this project, um, and if the developers can commit to a substantial amount of affordable housing units as well as maybe giving, uh, funds to the Barnes Housing Trust Fund. And I would like to see the jobs, the construction jobs be safe, uh, well-paid, there'd be DLL certified apprenticeships on those, uh, on those, um, projects so that the people living in Nashville can have a career path. Um, I think we should have a targeted hiring policy that, uh, reaches out to people in the promise zones, so this is an opportunity for them. Um, and I think that after the stadium opens, I would like to see the jobs, working at the concession stands, that those folks, um, make a living wage and also have the right to organize to make sure, um, that those jobs are good and that it lifts people, um, out of poverty. Soccer has the power to unite and it also has the power to divide. And I think if the council puts this project together in a way, um, that helps all Nashvillians, this is going to be really exciting, but otherwise, it's just going to be another project that divides the city. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jason Petty. I live in East Nashville in District Five and I started a supporters group called The Assembly, which, uh, started right after the, um, USL announcement came for a Nashville Soccer Club. And, uh, obviously, I'm very excited for the potential of the stadium and going to MLS. I'm also a big USA Soccer fan. I've been to ten men's and women's Nashville team games in the past three years. So, I know if we get this stadium built, uh, there's a lot of potential of hopefully bringing more USA games to Nashville. Also, just like we saw this summer with Man City and Tottenham, we could bring more teams from Europe to come here to play games in their preseason. There's obviously opportunity for more concerts, more festivals, and, uh, some of those stadiums I've been to for those USA games, they were MLS stadiums and, um, I think it would be perfect for Nashville. This is a very international city. There's companies from all over the world doing business here now, so I think our soccer team could reflect that and, uh, that's all I have to say and thank you for your time.
My name is Newton Domine. I'm a founding member of Nashville Soccer Club and president of the roadies, the club's original supporters group. I've lived in Nashville since nineteen ninety-three. I live in District Thirty-one and own a business in District Four. Over the last twenty-four years, I've seen Nashville develop into a beautiful, vibrant international city through strategic, smart expansion and development. I've seen the positive impact of Bridgestone Arena for downtown, the positive impact of Music City Center for Davidson County, the positive impact of Ford Ice Center for Antioch in South Nashville. I'd love to see this neighborhood get the same attention and improvements that other parts of Nashville have received through your approval of the stadium plan. Thanks for your time and your consideration. Have a great night.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Brayley. Thank you, appreciated council members. I very much appreciate that y'all take your job, that, to my knowledge, pays virtually nothing, very seriously, and invest a lot of time in listening to all of y'all. I know my council member definitely does, so I very much appreciate that.
I personally, my name is Toby Meyer, by the way. I live in East Nashville. I'm absolutely not opposed to soccer and I even like the idea of a stadium, but I also like the idea of having a racetrack and I think as the state capital, we should have a sizable and presentable state fair. And that's the reason why I'm wearing red tonight. I would really appreciate if y'all would consider, one, at least not adding the additional ten acres for mixed-use development, and two, if possible, consider a different location for the stadium so that we can preserve this location that was designed and intended as a fairgrounds to have a presentable state fair that's worthy of the state capital. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Danny Farrell. I'm from the thirtieth council district. Some of you on this council all know I have a very passionate man about South Nashville. I've lived here for fifty-one years. I'm not here for five minutes, okay? The passion you've heard everybody speak about on the soccer field, there's people that are passionate about the racing and the fairgrounds because we've lived here all of our lives. So, I want y'all to take in consideration that when you give ten acres of this land away, you need to go find us ten acres to build us a park. You need to give back to South Nashville what you've taken away all the years, okay? And the promises that you would build, a sidewalk-down, um, Harding Place that hadn't been finished. Many things that haven't been done. This was promised, this land, to always have a fair on it. And if you guys want to do the right thing, put it on a referendum. Let the people of Davidson County vote, not you guys. Let us do it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Murphy. I'm a neighbor. I live at five fifty-one Moore Avenue, District Seventeen. I'm a supporter of the Nashville Movement for MLS Soccer. I'm a Nashville native and I've seen this city change from day one to where we are now. Look how diverse our city is. How can we continue to close the gap and continue to be friends and neighbors and love each other? I look at soccer as an opportunity to continue to do that. Look at the Nashville Predators, what they've done. They've created an opportunity for us to create more friends. Look at how they have brought the city closer together. We all had something to rally around. How fun was that? I see, again, this is an opportunity for Nashville to grow and hope that we can bring a team here. Thank you.
It's good to see you guys again. Thank you so much for coming and listening to everyone. They're passionate about all different things. My name is Melissa Smithson and I live at four seven one four Dillia Drive in the great District Twenty-eight. I'm just going to appeal to you tonight. I'm having a hard time thinking of investing in so many of the nice-to-haves when we have such a long list of need-to-haves. And I can give you a few examples. I know you know these. Funding the pension plans for the Metro employees, better transit in the outlying areas, better solutions to combat our crime situation that is growing every day. It's very sad to hear on the news of not just one murder but three or four and shootings and stuff, so we have a whole lot more to invest in. I'm not against soccer. I welcome it. I, I think it's great. I love hearing how much passion is in this room about having soccer, but I don't want it, the cost and the risk of our citizens. You know, we brought in football team, we have brought in NHL, but do you know that we had a NASCAR team here that started in nineteen fifty-eight that does billions of dollars in business and they do just as much in the business-to-business behind the scenes? Yet, we let it go and it outnumbers the money that it makes than the other NHL and soccer combined. But just recently, one of the greatest racing businesses, SMI out of Bristol, was turned down for an opportunity to make a great racetrack. And I asked why. It would have made just as much money. Is that fair to the people that are passionate about racing, just as they're passionate about MLS, NHL, NFL? It's amazing, just six short years ago, we fought for this property because this city deemed it a blight and it was not worth anything. Today, it's the crown jewel for an MLS stadium. Why can it not be a crown jewel for NASCAR racing? Is that fair to the people? Is that fair to the people? Seventy-three percent of the people who voted to keep this, and they want the existing uses, and they want it to be better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ronnie Woodard, and I live in Brentwood, Tennessee, but in Davidson County. I moved here in two thousand and one for my career, and I didn't move here for the healthcare industry, and I didn't move here for the music industry, and I didn't move here for the cuisine. I moved here to be a soccer coach at Vanderbilt University. And so I'm here today to tell you about a little bit of my experience with that. I am a passionate soccer fan. I am a former player. I'm a current coach. I'm a current administrator at Tennessee Soccer Club, and my most important job is I'm a soccer mom, and you can tell because I kept my eight-year-old here well past his bedtime. So I can tell you that I really feel wholeheartedly that the MLS movement is genuine. One of the most important people that I met when I got to Vanderbilt was the Ingram family. I can't say that I've met a more genuine, philanthropic, or generous family, and I completely believe in their support of the Nashville community and then bringing MLS to Nashville. I believe that they'll keep their jobs here. I believe that they'll hire the workers that they were just talking so excited about, but I also believe that MLS Nashville community wants a soccer program. I think Nashville's the it city. I think we've grown, and I think with it has come soccer, and I think with that, we have opened our arms up, and Nashville will welcome the soccer fans, and the soccer fans will welcome Nashville, and we will continue to grow and thrive, and we will have somewhere for our children to learn and to have to aspire to be, and I can be a happy soccer mom at night with my son, who made sure that I mentioned his name while I was up here. So thank you. I'm in full support of MLS Nashville as a soccer fan, a former player, a current coach, a current administrator, and a soccer mom. Thank you.
My name is Tom Woodard. I live in the same house as Ronnie Woodard. I grew up in Davidson County, live in Davidson County. I own a business and property, and my business building's in Davidson County. I'm an incredibly proud Davidson County resident. My wife has tried to move me in several areas of Middle Tennessee, and I won't leave Davidson County. I work just down the street. I have a business, employs over twenty people. We work with persons in a blended workforce of special needs and able-bodied. We want a stadium on this site so we can bring our folks from our work after work to an amazing thing. I didn't grow up here playing soccer. We played baseball and basketball and football in Middle Tennessee when I was growing up a hundred years ago. Soccer has been a acquired taste for me over the years. Obviously, I married a coach, a player, a fan, and a soccer mom, but there would not be a better thing you could put here on this site that I've been coming to since a little boy at Fair Park than a new soccer stadium that would bring our city together around the most beautiful game I've been a part of. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Daniel Baron. I am a resident of Davidson County. My family owns property on Branford Avenue. I currently live in Old Hickory. I grew up just a stone's throw away from here. I went to the races. I support the continuation of races. I even rode the old wooden roller coaster, and there's probably not a lot of people who did do that in this room. I support the idea of soccer. I don't necessarily support the current master plan that was released yesterday. I'm opposed to the mixed-use development. The biggest concern I have is the continued operations of the flea market at the current square footages that we enjoy now. We are, Nashville is already a world-class city regardless of soccer being on these grounds or not. What we should be focused on is elevating the flea market to world-class status. That's other cities, they boast flea markets, Paris, London, New York, people come to go to these amazing markets. I'm concerned that the vendors do not have, they're being marginalized, vendor access, vendor parking, that needs to be addressed. I'm also concerned for the surrounding neighborhood. I urge studies to be done for, obviously, traffic and parking issues, but also for noise and light pollution. For one, for a period of time, I lived in London near the Queens Park Rangers Stadium, Loftus Road. Game days were, to be polite, obnoxious. If you're a resident, you could not get through. You could not do anything without hearing the noise of the game. Just, you know, it's worth looking into. Also, you know, I think that the, this mixed-use development is, it's really kind of a misstep, and I'm hoping that it will be eliminated. Thank you for your time.
My name is Zach Harrison, fourteen forty, Theodore Pike. First off, I think soccer would be good for the city. I think it would definitely bring everyone together, just like everybody has said. I don't think this is the site for it. I'm not as smart as everybody else, but I do know that when soccer stadium comes here, it's going to shut down everything that we already have going on here, and we see that on the wall, and that's coming from a kid whose earliest memories are in Victory Lane down there in Sterling Marlins Car, okay? And that pushed me to go on to this day. I support myself and my family from that track, still working there today. My brothers do the same thing, and we have an entire community of racers that are going to get lost in this if this goes down. And some of the biggest things that the soccer guys are saying, I'm bringing it here, is for the kids so that they have something to see, to shoot for. I'm here living proof that this place has already done it for a huge community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Hans Hobson. I'm the executive director for Tennessee State Soccer Association. We've been a five oh one C three since nineteen seventy-nine, and you've heard the young men and women tonight speak eloquently about soccer and the passion that it exudes in their hearts. You've heard from parents, you've heard from coaches. I represent all of these people. We have fifty thousand youth soccer players across the state of Tennessee, about a hundred and ten clubs, five thousand adult soccer players, and all of these people are interested in this project and are going to be in attendance at these games. So I thank you for your time tonight, and God bless.
Hello. My name is Chris Reddige. Mr. Bailey Brayley, thank you very much for your time tonight. Laura, thank you for organizing this. Council members, thank you very much for your time. Again, Chris Reddige, I moved here nine and a half years ago, but I started in Lincoln, Nebraska with not a lot of money, and soccer has taken me around the world. It took me to University of Richmond on a soccer scholarship. I played professional soccer. It brought me to the University of Nebraska back as a college soccer coach, and then ultimately it brought me here. I got to be involved with soccer with Nashville FC and am also one of the owners of Nashville Soccer Club. But more importantly, I want to talk to you about three things: collaboration, engagement, and the last one is unification. Collaboration, this is a collaborative effort. This is what democracy is all about. We're all sharing our passions and our feelings, and we're bringing everything that we have to it tonight. Second, engagement. You have an engaged community that is passionate about soccer, whether it's at the university level, at the youth level, or even at the professional level. But most importantly, it's about unification, and sport and soccer specifically has the ability to unify our entire city and unify the state of Tennessee. And there might be other Chris Reddiges around here that don't grow up with a lot of money that because of soccer are able to go off to college to play professional soccer, but at the end of the day, I'm also an owner of one of the fastest-growing technology companies here in the state of Tennessee, and that's what I'm passionate about, is creating opportunities for our city, for our youth, for our people to grow. Thank you.
My name's David Cobble. I've lived in Nashville my whole life, twenty-eight years. We've raced out here since I was thirteen, and it's constantly been a battle to keep the racetrack, and I feel like we're in it again. I'm not smart in many means, graduated from Hunter's Lane, done the best we could do, but I've got this pamphlet, and I've looked at it, and it just seems like everything's closing in on the racetrack. It just seems like there's not enough room. I don't see how, like was said before, they could do anything as long as there was construction going on, so I wonder if that would make it go away because it wouldn't have a lack of interest while that was happening. So I know what most of us kids do these days. I hop to my phone and start looking at it. When I looked at it, of course, the Ingram family, I've heard of them, I looked them up, then I ran across another investor or partner that was in on it by the name of Mark Wilf. I don't know the man. I don't know how true it can be. I'd love to do some more research, maybe y'all can tell me, but he just was in a lawsuit where he had to pay back eighty-four and a half million dollars to his partners. Is that somebody we really want to get in a business proposition with? It concerns me that maybe he's not the right one. Is it still being rushed along? Is it being pushed somewhere it doesn't need to be? I got this picture, and it just, it doesn't look like there's enough room to grow. There's nothing around, none of the properties can expand to be bigger and better. I have nothing against soccer. I've played soccer. I think it's a great sport, but I just don't see it fitting here. There's no room to expand, to get bigger, to get better, and that's what we all want to do. We want to succeed in racing. We want that to get bigger and better. This used to be one of the biggest places to race in the country. I hope soccer is the best place to play in the country, but I don't see it being able to get any bigger or better, putting it where it's at. So I just, I wish they would find a different location for it. Thank you.
I'm Jerry Cobble, and I live at Lebmo Ford North Great Cross Madison. I own a business on Dickerson Road. I'm going to start with there. This two hundred and seventy-five million dollars that you're going to propose to spend on this, I don't have storm drains on Dickerson Road. Every time it rains, people can't even use the right-hand lane going northbound on Dickerson Road. Why don't we fix some of these projects? Okay, then now I'm going to bring it back to the racetrack real quick. I'm going to educate you a little bit. Have any of you been in the infield? Have you used the porta-potties in there that we've been using for sixty years or seventy years because we didn't maintain this property and didn't develop this property like it should be? And now we're going to develop it with a soccer stadium? I'm okay with a soccer stadium. I can live with it. Move a little further toward the property line, put more space between it and the racetrack, and have a bigger place for the flea market, but also want the two hundred and seventy-five million dollars spent on rest of this property? It's going one-sided. We've already had this referendum. We've already voted. Davidson County people voted seventy-three percent to keep this property, not to commercialize it, not to build it for a private investor to profit from, and that's what you're doing. And that is wrong. It's a side-door move, come around the back of the referendum to get this pushed through, and you know it and I know it. I asked a gentleman the other day when I went to the fair board, made a hit, said, "Y'all going to redo the bridges around here? We got two hundred thousand dollars to redo the bridges," or whatever. I said, "Well, what about the bridge in the back, on the back straightaway where the tunnel don't even line up the bridge, so you can't really use it with a real haul or a long truck to come through there?" "Well, that's not in the budget. We don't have that kind of money. We can't afford to fix a bridge on this property, and we can afford to spend two hundred and seventy-five million dollars of my money? This is wrong, and y'all know what's wrong." I vote, I'm a registered voter, and I'm going to promise you, I would not elect these officials anymore. My councilman supports me.
Good evening. My name is Jason Moles. I am not from here. I'm from Lebanon. I am here to you this evening as a soccer enthusiast, somebody who's passionate about the sport, passionate about the game, but really passionate about how it affects families, how it affects kids. I have taken our soccer league with the help of some incredible people, from two hundred and sixty kids to nearly six hundred and twenty in about three and a half years. That's in Lebanon, okay? We have the opportunity, you have the opportunity, to make a compromise. Use the property the way the property needs to be used, but compromise. I think that, from what I've heard from everybody that I've spoken with here this evening, this place has a lot of history. This place has a lot of wants. People want a lot of things out of it, and they want to use the property for what it was intended for, but I think you have a compromise. The place needs to be upgraded. I have a landscape business, and we come in here, in this room specifically, every February and March, and we work in the Lawn and Garden Show. Absolutely love the show. It's a great revenue generator for our business. So personally, I would love to see a lot of upgrades done here to this property, but I think what you guys have on your plate is a compromise. In our situation, there's a proposal that's brought out. The only thing that we can do correctly is to rebut it, and then it comes back to the other side. We work, we compromise, and we settle on something that works for everybody, and I think you have that opportunity. But the thing I want you to understand is you guys, right now, have the opportunity of a lifetime to change the face of soccer in our city. I say "our" city. I live in Lebanon. Our city because Nashville is greater than just Nashville. Thank you, guys.
I'm Tony Watson, five thirty-nine Fairlane Drive, right here in Nashville, Tennessee. A sixty-year native here. Appreciate all y'all coming tonight and listening. I don't think the mixed-use development would work here. Affordable housing, I thought if you was going to do something of that nature, the condos at Branford should be bought, the duplexes down through there should be bought, and affordable houses should be put there if you're going to have any at all. I think the Fairgrounds Speedway should have a thirty-year contract, as well as this having a thirty-year contract. You know, we've never had anything up to only a five-year contract for the Speedway, and I think it's imperative to have that now that we've waited six years and we're having a soccer field come in here possibly, and I hope we get all worked together to make it all work in conjunction. But under them circumstances, I think that we need to buy more property across Noransville Road, buy Tony's Market where Oni's was, and then buy the property right up here on Wind Grove to help parking, because we're going to have a flea market next weekend, and people are going to be parking all over Raines Avenue, Noransville Road, Craighead. They'll be getting tickets. We don't have enough parking now, but I encourage y'all to try to make to where we can have more parking and maybe work all this in unity and support our fairgrounds as well to where we can have a thirty-year lease. Thank you all.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Vice Mayor. I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight for the public. I've been standing around tonight, and I've listened to a lot of people come to this podium tonight, and I don't think, there's hardly anybody that was in this building that would oppose our major-league soccer at all. I think a lot of people, what they're opposing is it being here at the Fairgrounds property. You know, I've watched this stuff from the very start. I've watched people get real enthused about this and really push this, really push this hard for the city. I know when we had the football stadium and we had all the debate about it, that we brought it to a referendum for the city, for the people to vote for this. We haven't had that opportunity here tonight. We haven't had that opportunity at all for this to happen. I do believe that this should be brought up for a referendum. I believe the people should be able to vote on this. This is not the last time they're going to vote for cities to be able to have a soccer franchise. I believe two years from now, they'll have another opportunity. And you'll hear, "Well, you know, more cities are going to get involved, and it'll be harder for us to get a bid," and this and that. I don't believe that. I believe if we wait and we methodically take our time in doing this soccer, major-league soccer, that we will have a better opportunity, we'll have a better, a better way of getting major-league soccer and giving us the time to do this. I feel this has been pushed through very, very, it's like putting a round ball in a square peg. It just don't work, you know? I don't think the time was set aside to really, really think this out, so I would just ask this council to think about what is going here, about the parking. I don't think anybody's brought up. We have a flea market here. What happens? Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Good evening, and thank you all the council members for being here tonight. My name is Louise Bustilles. Soccer, soccer, I mean... Soccer, soccer, I've been playing since I was three years old. And I played until two years ago. I'm seventy-seven years old. The reason I'm here is because I want you to understand that the sport is one of the sports that creates a better body and a better mind. And that's the legacy I like to leave to the kids. All the kids today that play soccer, they're looking for a figure, for a person, like we have in football, like we have in hockey. We like to have the same thing for soccer. Soccer is a sport that you continuously have to move. You have to be in good physical condition. Our kids are in good physical condition. And I want to go beyond that. I want Nashville to have a professional team. And maybe a team where some of the players will represent us in the World Cup and bring that World Cup here to our country. But it's up to you. You have to make that decision. Economically, you're gonna have to help the surrounding counties, Nashville and Davidson County. So thank you for coming here tonight and listening to us. Thank you.
Hello, Vice Mayor Neighbors, Rosie, it's good to see you up there and Council members, appreciate you being here. I think a lot of folks would love to have soccer here. I would love to find a way to make this deal work. One of the challenges I have right now is the charter and the private acts that created the Fair Board and this property say they can lease the property for specific purposes. We amended that charter in 2011 to protect certain things. But the charter says they can lease the property for amusement, they can lease the property for expo services, they can lease the property for promoting industry. Housing is not one of those uses. And then the ten-acre giveaway, that's a challenge. And that's what, it's an inducement. But I'm gonna share a brief story here, and the thing, my concern here is the old story of the chicken and the pig, which one's more committed to breakfast? Chicken lays an egg, but the pig gives up a leg and most often a life. The Fairgrounds, if they don't have summer remuneration coming back to the Fairgrounds for ongoing operation, we give up the Fairgrounds. Because it can't host a fair if it's all the areas taken up for parking or for mixed-use development. We give up what the Fairgrounds has meant to the people of this city. And so my point is, what's coming back from this proposal to the Fairgrounds? Sure, they're proposing spending twenty-five million on improvements, but what goes to the ongoing daily operation of the property? From the soccer stadium, not a dime right now. So let's find a way to make it work where we get soccer, but we do it in such a way that honors the charter and provides for the ongoing operation of the property. Not just one-sided. So let's have a great breakfast, but do it all where everybody gets to participate.
At Phillip Cruz, I've grown here all my life. When 440 was a train track. And my grandfather used to take me to the Fairgrounds all the time. We did have a roller coaster. And down bottom of the hill, there was batting cages. Our Little League baseball team used to rent that by the hour during the summer, a couple of times a month, and rent the batting cages. There's ten or twelve of the pitching machines. Below the hill here, there was Fair Park, there was Haunted House, and just so much to do. And now there's nothing. In the spring of this year, I proposed to do even just a haunted house for Halloween up here with all these empty buildings. And there's just so much more that could be done with the Fairgrounds than, it's sort of a diamond in the rough, that could be more available for this city.
Well, I think that wraps it up for our public hearing. I do wanna thank everybody for coming. But I think our, we have, more than half of our Council members came tonight. So I really begged them to come. I really wanted to make sure we had a good turnout, so I wanna thank all of them tonight for coming. And I'm sure they're gonna stick around and be glad to answer any one-on-one questions that are asked. Thank you very much. And thank you to the Fairgrounds staff and police for making this available to us tonight. And the Sheriff's Department for doing our security. Thank you very much.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.